All right, welcome. I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order, the February 25th, 2025 School Board Work Session and Budget Public Hearing Number One, plus closed meeting. Dr. Noonan, can you please call roll?
Yes, Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Sherwood.
Here.
Ms. Silverman.
Here.
Ms. Tyce.
Here.
Mr. Anderson is away from the table.
Away from the table, yes.
Sorry. Should have turned my mic on for that.
Yeah, that's all right. All right, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll move on to 1.04, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I please have a motion, Ms. Tyce?
Yes.
I move that the School Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Kathleen. Can I have a second? Thanks, Bethany. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Now we'll go on to Appreciate Ourselves, 2.01, the School Board Appreciation. Dr. Noonan?
We could start that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe take some of the pressure off and feel a little more comfortable. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association puts out a month to celebrate school boards, and it is February. This, of course, was planned for the regular meeting, but thank you to our school board for being so flexible. We appreciate you for that. Our last meeting, of course, was held online due to snow. So we have video this evening that we want to share with you, but before we do that, a couple of things that were at your place. The first is a quick certificate that just says how much we... It's a certificate of appreciation, so just know that from all of us, we appreciate your work. And then you also got a plant from one of our favorite places here in town, Botanologica. And the shop owner, just by the way, Sarah, was the homecoming queen at Centerville High School when I was the principal there. And so I have a really great picture of the two of us standing out in the middle of the field and her getting some plants, some roses, so maybe that's where her affinity came from. But anytime we have a chance to support a local business like Botanologica, we did. But quickly about the plants, if you look at them, you will note that the flower or that the plant is in a heart shape. And I just would remind you, these were supposed to be given to you two weeks ago, which sort of corresponded a little bit with our Valentine's Day, but we hope that you enjoy that plant. So on behalf of the staff here tonight and the community, we really appreciate you. So John, you want to share the video?
Thank you.
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 Thank you for ensuring we have time to learn, play, and have fun at school.
We appreciate how you help make our school a kind and happy place for everyone.
Thank you for listening to different ideas and making sure everyone is included.
We appreciate that you learn from the past and help our schools grow.
We appreciate that you solve problems to help our school be a great place to learn.
Thank you for always asking questions and trying to understand new ways to make our school awesome.
Thank you for listening to students and teachers and making good choices for our school.
We appreciate that you make informed decisions to help our learning.
We are grateful that you make big decisions on behalf of our students and staff.
Thank you for being fair and making good choices for all students.
Thank you for school, for everything that you do.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
How are you guys? What is the school board?
Uh, I don't know.
What does that say?
Um, I don't know.
Appreciate.
Appreciate.
Say, "I appreciate you."
A beer.
Appreciate sounds like a beer. You're right. Do you know what the word appreciate means?
Oh, well, I don't know that.
What does appreciate mean, Isabel?
You like it.
You like it! If I was going to show you, I appreciate you, what should I give you?
A present.
Present, like what?
A pet.
A pet? What kind of pet?
A rabbit.
A rabbit. So if you wanted to show the school board that you appreciate them, what would you do?
Uh, I would play with them.
So how do you show someone you appreciate them?
By doing the things that the chores.
By doing what?
The chores.
Would you appreciate Taylor Swift? Can you sign "thank you"?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you all very much. It's nice to see the arc of our kids, from oldest to youngest, and they're all cute in their own special way.
I really love the plant. It's so adorable, but where's the rabbit?
Yes, that was very nice, very nice video. Thank you for everyone putting that together, and obviously for the teachers and the students. That was... I know that we deal with big issues, and it makes it a lot easier to work with you all on going through this. It's a great district to work, and it's a great district to serve, and we definitely look forward to the chores being done too, not just the rabbits. So yeah, thank you very much, all. All right, we'll move on to 2.02, School Board Clerk Appreciation. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Tyce.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, our amazing clerk is not here today, but I still wanted to take a... we still wanted to take a moment to say thank you to her. Last week was the VSBAs School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and we didn't have a meeting last week, so this is our first meeting since that week. And we just wanted to take a moment and share this proclamation in appreciation of our amazing clerk, Marty Goodell. Says, "Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her, his county, or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks help to ensure students achieve their highest potential and provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, and now therefore the VSBAs Board of Directors does hereby recognize February 17th to 21st, 2025, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia." So Marty, if you're watching, thank you so much. We're so grateful for you, and I know that everybody in this room took some time to celebrate you last week, and we wanted to just close out your celebrations with that proclamation.
Yes, as we always say, Marty is the unseen glue, unseen... the engine that drives all of us in terms of our work and how we come together, and so we hope she's listening tonight, or soon. So thank you very much, Marty. All right, now we're going to move on to our Budget Public Hearing Number One. In accordance with School Board Policy BVH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted for the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. Dr. Noonan, do we have any written statements?
We do not have any written statements, and we also don't have anyone who's signed up to speak or this evening who's waiting to speak.
Okay, great, thanks, Dr. Noonan. All right. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to our work session topic. The main one is 4.01, the Summer Learning Program. So we look forward to hearing from all of our guests tonight. Thank you for taking time on a Tuesday night with us. So who?
I'll go ahead and set it up just very briefly to say first, thanks to the team that's here this evening. This team, along with principals and other staff members, have worked really hard to put together what we think is a really effective and efficient model for summer learning here in the city of Falls Church that does a couple of things. First, it makes sure that the students that need the most support are going to get a face-to-face opportunity to meet with our teachers here in Falls Church this summer, and also at the same time creates an opportunity for us to save a little bit of money. And that certainly was not the driver of this decision, but at the same time, when looking at past programs that we've put together around summer learning, we recognized that there was a lot of... there were a lot of moving parts, and it perhaps wasn't as... and this is just sort of the nature of the beast. Sometimes it wasn't as tight as it could be, so we really got tight on a few things this summer. And tonight, this team is here to share with you our plan moving forward. The gears are sort of in motion at this point. Because of the timing, we need to hire school administrators for the site and the like, but really excited about where we landed with the new summer learning program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bates and his team, who have a nine-slide presentation, and they're going to move through it pretty quickly.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. And Chair Tyce and Vice Chair... Vice Chair Tyce and Chair Gould and members of the board, we're excited to have this opportunity to present our slide deck. You can go back up one. Thank you. Not quite ready for that one yet, but what we did want to do is first just kind of put aside, as Dr. Noonan was saying, that, you know, any concern that we weren't going to have summer school or that we're not having summer school this year. And so we do have a summer learning plan, and we're going to go over that with you. It's going to look just a little bit different, and so we'll talk about some of those changes that we made. But one thing that we did do, as Dr. Noonan shared, we looked for efficiencies in the program. We looked at how we could adjust some of the goals and priorities of the program to really meet the needs of our community and of our schools, which is narrowing gaps. And so you're going to see through this plan, we're really looking at prioritizing our students who need the greatest amount of support. So our priority is our Tier Three students, and our Tier Three students are those students who require a more focused intervention to target specific skill deficits. We're going to increase the time in ELA and mathematics, which also will include small group remediation and intervention. I also want to point out that no new instruction will be taught during the summer learning program, but we want to have that high intense focus on providing intervention and building those skills and filling in those gaps. That will be an in-person opportunity for our Tier Three students who are invited. For our Tier Two students, we're going to provide them an opportunity to engage through bringing home a laptop for our students. Our K2 students would have an opportunity to bring home an iPad with parental permission, and they can access adaptive programs online that are tailored to meet their individual needs. Our ESOL students, as we've noted here, will have an opportunity to engage in a program, and we will also offer an in-person ESY services for students who require that through their IEP, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, and that's something that we've always done. And then we aren't planning to make any changes to our secondary model with our HIGH-C or hybrid program. So we're offering an intense intervention program, providing students with an hour and 45 minutes of an ELA block and a 75-minute block for mathematics. So this is going to be a minimum of three hours and 15 minutes of math and ELA instruction, and that's going to be offered four days a week. We'll offer a 30-minute recess for our K5 students, and students will also be able to have a morning snack and a grab-and-go lunch at the end of the day. We really looked at, again, honing in and making adjustments and what made most sense, and so we decided to run a more intense program over four days during the week. And what we've learned over the last few years is that we've had challenges with attendance on Fridays. Many of our students also are participants in the daycare program and want to take part in the field trips, and so we've seen a decrease in attendance on Fridays. We also know that we've had challenges. Some of our families have had challenges as well, based upon their personal schedules with wanting to travel, take vacation. And so those are some of the reasons why we looked at intensifying the program with a heavy focus on the ELA and mathematics. At the lower level, we also went... moved away from the encore courses, which is something we've done in the past where a student would be able to take PE or an art, something of that nature, and really narrowing in on the ELA and the mathematics four days a week. The schedule could change, and so what we provided here is just a general kind of high level, what a schedule could look like at the lower level. It hasn't been finalized yet, but you can see from 8:30 to 12:30 what that might look like for a student. And our goal is to run as few buses as possible, and so if things work out, once we've finished our planning with the Transportation Department, we could potentially have two buses making runs to both of the sites. And I mentioned both of the sites, so we're going to have two summer learning sites, and Mount Daniel will have our K5 students, and Meridian, our 612 students. For 2025, we estimated hiring two site-based administrators, nine teachers, and four professional... paraprofessionals, and two bus drivers. This is a reduction, when we look at 2024, of three site-based administrators, because last year we had five sites and we're moving to two sites. So this is a reduction of three site-based administrators, 15 certified staff, that would be inclusive of teachers and counselors, and 15 paraprofessionals, and two bus drivers. We provided the total number of staff hired in the 2024 budget responses that also included some estimated cost savings for you there. We're staffing the program based upon the number of invitations that we send out minus the estimated number of students who we anticipate attending. And so it's really not apples to apples. So for example, if we send out 50 invitations to 50 families, previous data has shown us that about 60% of those families will actually send their students, and so 50 invitations would yield about 30 students, and so we are staffing based upon those numbers. So based upon our updated data assessment, we've estimated that the number, and we've included it here, this is the number of students that would receive invitations. We're going to incorporate a 15-to-1 staffing ratio, which justifies hiring the following numbers for our teachers. You'll see that, for instance, Mount Daniel, I'll jump to that second bullet there, we have 70 students being invited, but we're looking to staff it three teachers. Well, if we look at, again, based upon the estimates, that 60% would be about 40 students expected to attend, so we're looking at staffing at three teachers. Oak Street, 70 students at this time would be on that invite list, estimating about 45 students would attend, which would yield three teachers. And then for Mary Ellen Henderson, we would expect about 24 to 25 students attend, which would yield about two teachers. We haven't posted this yet, we're finalizing it, but we do have a hiring and enrollment timeline, and we'll work on publicizing that in the upcoming days. The first thing would be identifying those site-based administrators, and so the plan is to have that done by March 1st. We want to identify our students by March 15th. We want to notify our parents with the initial letter by April 1st, and then send a follow-up letter with confirmation of student attendance by April 11th. And then we want to finalize the teacher and staff hiring by April 11th, and then make any necessary staffing adjustments shortly after that. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mrs. Macrina, who will share a little bit more about how we identify students as we're talking about Tier Three versus Tier Two, and then, as I mentioned before, ESY will also talk a little bit about that in the upcoming slides.
Thank you, Dr. Bates, and good evening, everyone. Before I jump into the criteria for Tier Three, I thought it'd be helpful if we just... I gave a quick overview of what multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, is, and that we've been referring to the tiers, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, just for context. Multi-tiered systems of support is a framework that helps us identify and support the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of students. And so we use that... in MTSS, we use this data to help us determine what types of interventions and targeted instruction that students need. So within that system and that framework that we use, there are the tiers that we refer to. So Tier One is where all students receive that core instruction, that's differentiated instruction, that is explicit lessons to students, and that actually encapsulates about 80 to 90% of our student body. Tier Two instruction is a double dip, if you will. It is students needing that extra support, so the Tier Two students receive core, and then they receive more in Tier Two. It's very targeted. It's anywhere from... it could be anywhere from 5 to 15%. It's a little bit of a bear range, and that looks more like a small group instruction of students. And then finally, Tier Three, as you've been hearing us refer to tonight, that is 5% or less of our students who need that triple dip. So they receive that core, they receive more, and then some additional more. So that's that third actual instructional time, and most of that time is done in a pull-out model. Our students during the school year receive that intervention with our specialist or our interventionist at the school level. So knowing that, we use data to help form our decisions for our interventions, and central office and school-based leaders analyze the data throughout the year to determine what tiers of support students may need. And specifically for this summer learning, we identify students who are in Tier Three that will be receiving that support. And so as you can see, we have listed four bullet points of the data that we are using to identify our Tier Three students. And so we refer to VALS, which is actually the acronym, refers to the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System. That is for ELA identification for K2 students and newly arrived students in third grade. So that is one of our data points we will use. We also use our STAR Universal Screener. That is for all students in grades three through eight, and that is specific for ELA and math. That is a research-based screening and progress monitoring tool that collects data both in mathematics and language arts. DIBELS, which is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Literacy Skills, all these wonderful acronyms. It's helpful that we can spell those out. We all need to see them. And those are a series of short assessments, and that... in DIBELS, they... that measures literacy skills, specific for students K through eight. I said K through five, I'm sorry, K through five there. And then in addition, it also helps us with students that look specifically about phonemic awareness, accuracy, fluency, and comprehension. And then finally, our SOLs, which are our Standards of Learning, and that is, again, aligned to our Virginia standards, and that'll be the assessment of English Language Arts and Mathematics. So teachers will be using a variety of instructional programs that will be aligned this summer to the science of reading for English Language Arts, and in addition to it, it'll... we will work on skills and concept base that are focused for mathematics. And so in our elementary curriculum, for math, our teachers will work with students using manipulatives and really focus on the concept of conceptual understanding in addition to subtraction, multiplication, and division. And in our elementary curriculum for ELA, listed up there, which are the Lexia Core Five Lessons in Orton Gillingham, this is really built around, as I mentioned, the science of reading, and it'll focus, again, on phonemics... phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and writing. And Orton Gillingham, as you may have heard multiple times, we have talked about, the teaching practices will also use a multisensory approach with helping with decoding sounds, blending letters, and helping students with spelling. And then when we move to the middle school, their curriculum, teachers will, in math, offer explicit math instruction, and they're going to be using really intentional strategies that focus on rebuilding critical math foundational understandings of concepts. And subsequently, the ELA part, students will have an opportunity to focus on word study, grammar, comprehension, and additional program will focus on writing. And then finally, in our high school curriculum, which is our hybrid program, as Dr. Bates mentioned, will not be changing this summer, we'll have two options. So it'll be credit recovery and course acceleration. So credit recovery is an option for students who have not completed a credit-bearing course and need that for graduation. And then the other option would be course acceleration, obviously, where students can earn a credit by completing one of the courses, and all of those are offered online in our
So when we think about our students with disabilities, specifically, and thinking about extended school year services, certainly all students experience some loss when they've undergone a long break, such as summer. And when we look at extended school year services, however, we're looking at the data throughout the year on students related to the critical life skills, and these are services that are specifically for our students with disabilities, to consider whether beyond the regular school year, they continue to need services in order to support significant jeopardization of loss of skills related to these critical life skills. And so an IEP team is going to look at data throughout the year. They're going to consider a variety of factors regarding that student, very unique to that individual's needs. Those factors could include regression and recoupment. They could include nature and severity of the child's disability and its impact on their learning. Could consider interfering behaviors that are interrupting the flow of teaching and learning, and so that the student might require these services. It could be a student is having an emerging skill, and without those continued services will significantly experience a loss and put them at a setback much further than would be expected at the beginning of the school year, for example. Could be other circumstances. Heaven forbid, a child were undergoing chemotherapy, for example, and perhaps that interrupted their learning through the year, and the IEP team would consider that and could look at the impact, perhaps propose extended school year services in order for that child to receive a free and appropriate public education. We will be offering the services concurrently with the summer learning program and maximizing our resources by utilizing the sites, but certainly if a child's IEP delineates other needs, those would be met according to how it is outlined in that child's IEP.
All right, lastly, we have...
All right, lastly, we have our summer staffing needs. So Dr. Bates discussed a bit about what some of this would look like. So having the two sites would mean we would have an elementary, a pre-K5 administrator at Mount Daniel to support that program. And then we would have an administrator at the secondary campus supporting that program as well. So they would oversee the daily operations at each site, including the oversight of E S Y, which would be supported by my lovely colleague, Angelina Prestapino. We'll have school health aide at both sites and public health nurses, based on availability and need for that. Teachers will be general education and special education teachers to instruct students in all grade levels, with some emphasis on hiring teachers that are duly certified so that we can really meet the needs of ESOL students who might be attending the program, and really support students who need the differentiation of service in their Tier 3 supports. There'll be paraprofessionals available to support teachers in typical ways that we utilize paraprofessionals in IEPs or in the younger grades. Special ed-related service providers, Angelina touched on that a bit. And those are aligned with students' IEPs. And the needs that the students have will certainly provide any supports that they are in need of. Dr. Bates touched on the fact that because we're holding the programs at two sites, it allows for more efficiency in our staffing for buses and utilization of buses. So that will really help us quite significantly by providing transportation just to the two sites. Food services, again, will provide breakfast and lunch, grab-and-go services to all students as they're there. So food's available and ready for students to be as ready as possible for learning in their summer program. Our lovely technology team will be available and ready to support all of our learners with their technology needs and teachers and administrators with whatever technology needs they might have as well for learning and assessment. And that brings us to the end of our slides. So we thank you very much for supporting our students and their opportunities to fill their gaps and be on their best foot forward in their next school year.
So with that, thank you to the team for, again, not just presenting, but also engaging in all of the work we've engaged in over the last number of weeks to make this a reality. And as you all can see, we're excited, but we have some work to do as it pertains to hiring and making sure that we're staffed. And then also, moving forward, looking at some training and onboarding that we would do for the folks. But that would conclude our presentation. And if you all have any feedback or questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Bates. Thank you to everybody for rethinking this for summer school. I know summer is usually a time when you start and you have the time to rethink and change and adjust, and to do this in the last number of weeks. With everything else going on, yeah, it's great to see us trying to be proactive. And I think that's the hard thing, is I think in education, very rarely do we get to try different things. And I think it's great to see you all come together and say, what do our students need first, and how do we meet that? And I appreciate the work on this. So I'm going to go and open this up. Lori?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I learned a lot about how we are restructuring this, it's good to see. I do have a few questions. What about our students who need either ELA or math? And they are identified in this Tier 3 group, they need that extra help. Is that still going to be a four-hour program for them that day?
I can jump in and answer that, yes. They will receive both English Language Arts and Mathematics. So even if they are identified only with math or ELA, they would receive both.
Okay, second question is, what does the Tier 2 program look like, unless I missed something?
Yeah, so it'll be online. It's adaptive programs. The students will have access to both ELA and math. What is wonderful about the programs we have now that it'll meet the students' needs where they are. So in terms of our Tier 2 students who need that extra support, it is the same types of programs they've been working on during the school year. And so they will be able to continue that virtually, online. But the program will beat them at all the levels that they need to and progress throughout the summer. And also have access if they need, again, the laptop or iPad.
And is that something that's flexible within their day? So the kids can still do day camp and then do this online?
Absolutely, yes.
So it might be more kid-friendly, I should say, for the kid that wants to go to summer camp or has other priorities for the summer?
Absolutely, and those programs are not new to the students. Those are things that they would have been using during the school year or had had access to. So our hope would be that they are able just to really fluidly go right into that into the summer.
Are there teachers on call that will jump in when the Tier 2 students need help online?
That isn't something that we had planned to have.
Okay, I was curious, if a kid gets stuck, like where do they go? Just to their parents, or?
Yeah, but that's something we can look at, because...
It's just a thought, like, you know, if I'm doing something online and I get stuck, you know, who do I ask a question to?
Knowing that the programs are adaptive and they change based on the students' needs, it would adjust within its program. So if a student got stuck, then as the program continues, it would change. That's part of the program itself. So I'm thinking more of like a technical issue, potentially. We could think of that, but if it's adaptive, they would be able to continue into that program.
Yep, and I've seen how these programs are adaptive. I've done a lot of the epic online reading, so I'm familiar. And, um, final question. You said about, Dr. Bates, you said about 60% of our students accept this. How do we engage the other 40%? Because I don't want to just say, like, it's great that we get 60%, which is great. But let's, how do we get that other 40% in? When they should, when, not should, I don't like to use that word, but when we would really want them to be in summer school in order to give them that enrichment?
Right, so my initial response to that is engaging them during the year, during the day, before we get to summer. Because we know what the data is saying. As far as progress, teachers know specifically, and they're working with our reading specialists and our math coaches, our coordinators here that work with our teachers. But anything and everything we can do during the school day and during the year to have students make gains prior to summer coming is what we want to do. I would say, then, to the second piece of that, we have to, we respect that families, again, are making personal choices, whether it is to, you know, to travel or to take vacation. Some families want their student to have a break over the summer. But what we would do is, again, leading up to the summer, having that data, communicating with parents that here are the needs of your students, and here are opportunities that we have during the year, but then also in the summer. And we would really encourage you to come. One of the things that we've talked about and we're adding a component that I didn't mention is we're also looking at kind of scaling up the attendance, because that's not something that we've done in the past. And so that might be another way to engage parents in that this is, it's a meaningful program. It's going to support your student, help your student make gains. And there's an expectation that your student would be here participating, you know, throughout the summer.
I would also add that all Tier 2 and Tier 3 students will have access to those online resources that we were talking about. So if a student can't come, they could also have access to the online resources.
That was actually going to be my follow-up question. A student identified for Tier 3, can they just say, I would rather do the Tier 2, do it on my own time, spend an hour a day focusing on this versus this four-hour block?
Absolutely.
Not that we want to promote that, I understand, we want to...
Yeah, that's not the ideal.
I understand. Not ideal, but as a way to get that other 40% in. If a child is identified as Tier 3, I'd rather have them be in Tier 2 than at 0, right? So, right.
Yep, and so in working with the parents, once we get those letters out, again, Tier 2 or Tier 3, parents will be able to receive that letter and make a decision. My student is in Tier 3, but I'm going to opt to have the laptop come home with those adaptive programs, and I'll work with my child over the summer, regardless of Tier 2, Tier 3.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Lori. Amy?
Thank you for this presentation, this was really informative. I'm wondering, just to hone in a little bit on the Tier 2 students, is this, I noticed there was a slide that identified the criteria that's used to identify the Tier 3 students. Is that similar criteria applied to identify Tier 2?
It sure is, and so we have that same criteria. It's just the specific range and score looks a little different for Tier 2.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Can I also add, just to, and I think this was mentioned, but I also want... I know this was mentioned, but I also want to just sort of reiterate it. You know, Tier 1 instruction is all kids. Tier 2 is intervention in the classroom. So these are kids that just need really minor tweaking, minor intervention, maybe just a couple of days of intervention and aren't in as great a need as the Tier 3. And then in Tier 3 during the school year, those kids are actually pulled out. So I just want to make sure that we also recognize that these Tier 2 kids are really just sort of on the cusp of being right there and just sort of a little bit of extra gets them across the line. So I know you know that, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
For the purpose of those that might be watching at home.
100%, I appreciate that. So for those students, ah, now I've lost my train of thought. Thanks, just kidding.
Sorry about that. That was the plan, though. No, I'm just kidding.
The criteria for the, I'm wondering when, I know it's not, you probably, you don't consider it necessarily a snapshot. The decision isn't a snapshot. But when is the, when do you make the final determination who gets an invitation?
Yeah, our coordinators and specialists have been working with teachers all year, reviewing data. And so what we shared on the slide deck is based upon the most recent data. And again, that's not just one assessment, it's multiple data sets over a period of time. Those are the numbers that our coordinators and our specialists have shared with us, rough estimates.
I would say that, to answer your question, it will be within the next two weeks that those students will be identified.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. Jared?
Thank you all so much for the presentation. I know that summer school, especially in a small district, is kind of hard to pull off. And so we appreciate your work on it. So just to kind of make sure I have all this right. So E S Y and summer school are going to be at two sites. So the K through 5, E S Y, and summer school is going to be at Mount Daniel. And then similarly, for the secondary, it's going to be at Meridian. Okay, great. And I know you had mentioned that there are students who also do the summer, the Summer Fund Program with the school, with the summer daycare. With the children who do the summer daycare camp at Oak Street, will there be the opportunity to be dropped off by the bus at that point?
Yeah, we, sorry, Kristin, did you want to say, go ahead. We talked to Katie Clinton about that extensively, to think about, like, what's the best way to meet everybody's needs. And it's an easy bus stop to add on from just bringing the kids from Mount Daniel through Oak Street on the bus route home. And what we also talked to her about was, I believe it's Wednesdays are pool days, and that's the big one. So we figured we could really navigate the Oak Street kids at Mount Daniel, coming to Mount Daniel with their, with the things that they need and getting on the bus from Mount Daniel so that they don't miss out on pool day. Because we don't want them to miss out on any of the fun things.
No, I know that would have been a question from many parents. That would have been my question as well, because we've done summer school with the summer daycare. So I appreciate that, and that's great.
Anne?
Thank you, and I'll just echo what everyone else has said, that we really appreciate this presentation, all the work that you all have done. And this has been really useful. I had just also a few clarifying questions. Just from what I understand, from what you all said about the online resources, if a student were to take home an iPad or a laptop, that's entirely self-paced, right? So, okay. And do we have a sense of how many Tier students there are? We had a good sense of how many Tier 3 students from the presentation, but how many Tier students will be invited to take home these laptops?
Our Tier 2 students, I think we're still working through that. I don't, our, again, our primary focus, similar to, you know, thinking back to what Dr. Noonan had shared, like, our primary goal, focus, step one, Tier 3, and what is the program going to look like for Tier 3? But then, again, not forgetting about or neglecting our Tier 2 students. But I know we have that data pretty readily available. And so we'll be working on that over the next number of days to make sure we identify those students. Not identify, because they're already identified, but make sure we're communicating with the teachers, and teachers are communicating with the parents to get that information out.
I can provide those numbers in a Noonan's note as soon as they become available. How many Tier 2 and how many Tier 3?
Thank you.
Sure.
And I know you're already working through a lot of complications, but if you do not get the kind of uptake that you expect from Tier 3 students, the kind of acceptances to the invitation, would you make those sort of open spots available to Tier 2 students to attend in person? Is that an opportunity that has been thought about, or?
We did talk about it, and you and I talked about it as well. I think there are some challenges, instructionally, that we would need to be able to navigate. So let us continue to sort of think about that and how that might work. I think more than anything, it's not only the instructional challenges, but because there's a greater number of kids in Tier 2, usually the numbers break out, 100% of the kids are in Tier 1, 15% of the kids are in Tier 2, 5% typically are in Tier 3. So then which Tier 2 kids would be provided access? So we're trying to sort of navigate that a little bit.
Fairly, that would be a difficult, I understand, process to take on. I did also just want to ask about, on Slide 2, the presentation talks about the ESOL opportunity with F C P S. Is that something that's new this year? Or is that something we've always given as an opportunity, or?
We have attempted to utilize it in the past. So during COVID, we did participate in their online program. So F C P S has a well-vetted and longstanding online program for ESOL students in grades 7 through 12. So during COVID, we did partner with Fairfax County for them to enroll all of our 7th through 12th grade English learners who were active service students to participate in that program. And this year, last year, there were some issues with our MOU on their side. It won't be an issue this year, because we're finalizing that now. So it is, it's a great program for students to have access to, and they're like very receptive to taking all of our 7th through 12th grade ESOL students into the program. It's adaptive in the sense that students are grouped into a class that's very specific to their ESOL level. So while we in Falls Church have 191 ESOL students and about 60 at the secondary level, they have 30,000 ESOL students. So they have student, they have a class in their online program that's like WEDA Level 1 through 1.8, right? It's very specific to their WEDA levels to really navigate academic language and language change in a really targeted way with students that are at very specific levels with them. So it's a great opportunity for our students to take advantage of that.
I appreciate, yeah, the looking for ways to, you know, partner with other places where we can't provide, you know, given our size, to really make use of that. It sounds like that is quite different from the online opportunity that we're offering that's self-paced and adaptive, that that's very specific to particular levels, and the student would show up each day with an online, okay, and with support.
And PM option for students, a lot of students have jobs and can't do an AM or they can't do a PM. So you have the option to register for your AM session or your PM session every one hour of synchronous class with your teacher. And then there's homework on language and reading and tools that they use throughout the week. So they meet every day from five days a week for one hour with a teacher synchronously. they meet every day from five days a week for one hour with a teacher synchronously, and then have a module homework to work on outside of that, and I think it's typically three, a three week session.
Okay.
And to be really clear, if a student's an ESOL student and a Tier Three student, they're going to be invited to ours.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Bethany?
Thank you for providing all this great detail. I can tell how much detail work has gone into this, I'm going to ask you to zoom out because I don't have the context to understand the detail yet, which is, can you just give me an overview of what, how this compares to what we did last year, or in the prior years?
Yeah, first, I think just from a staffing standpoint, we had many more staff members, and we, like we were sharing at the very beginning, we did offer more options for students to engage outside of the mathematics and the E L A. And so for our K five students, their day may have included much less time in mathematics, less time in E L A, to provide more time for recess, to provide more time for a P E class, to provide more time for some of the other encore classes. And so again, as we were looking at prioritizing highest, highest need students who have, who are in the gap academically, that's where we made that shift. So, so one was the staffing and, and some, and the numbers as well, student numbers and staffing numbers.
So last year, we provided broader range of classes in the same time period for more students?
Yes.
And for not just Tier Three students in person, right?
Yes.
So we're really focusing in on Tier Three students, is the context?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm curious about the remote learning and the laptop being sent home, given the amount of comments we had from families earlier in the year about phones and laptops and whatnot. In the classrooms, I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about how this is going to be communicated to parents, particularly around their ability to control, access control when their kids are on their laptops, that type of thing, and if there are options for parents who don't want their kids to have laptops home with them?
Yeah, so it's really, it's going to be based upon, you know, what the, what the parent wants. And so we, what we will do is communicate, this is what we're, we're offering students, and we can explain the programs, we didn't get, you know, into that, but specifically here are the programs, here's how it's aligned to the curriculum, here's how your student can access the curriculum and actually engage in some intervention and skill building. But the parent has to be involved and the parent has to make the decision. If the parent is not wanting their student to come home with the laptop, then we would not provide the laptop to the student.
And will securely and all those programs continue to be active so the parent can manually send the kids online?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, and it's a great opportunity for us to promote securely home, so through that application, parents on the F C C P S device, so it would be the laptops, so not the iPads. But on the laptops, parents could set exactly the time that the students have access, they have the ability to turn it off, they have that full control, and it's a great opportunity for us to share that with parents to utilize over the summer and just remind them that that works the entire year, not just during the school year.
Great.
And I would, you know, also offer, Kristin, that our-
So I would also offer, so Kristin, our tech team, as we had mentioned in one of the previous slides, we have our, our tech team that's on staff all summer, and so they're, whether it's tech support, or whether we have to run reports, or we have to have our tech team engage and pull information, shut down systems, we're ready to do that and able to do that pretty quickly.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Kathleen?
Thank you, all right, thank you again for all this information. Just had a couple clarifying questions to start. You mentioned the laptops, I know his, during the school year, Mount Daniel K one have laptop, I mean have iPads, right? But for summer school, will the Tier Two K ones have a laptop? Or still an iPad?
The K two, yeah, they will have iPads.
So K one will still have iPads, okay. And I'm wondering, in the, in the universe of students who have, I don't want to imply that these are all three overlapping, but there's, we have our ESOL population and our summer school population and our families that are students who qualify for free and reduced meals population. So when those overlap, how does that program marry with, how do our free and reduced meals program in the summer marry with the kids who are at summer school versus not?
Do you want to take that? But I don't, we don't charge.
Our summer school program provides free breakfast and lunch, it's a bagged lunch to every school that attends. So doesn't matter if you're eligible for free or reduced meals or not, just with the summer program, we provide both of those items. For any of our families who are eligible for free and reduced meals, who wish to participate in our backpack program, that is something that they can continue to get during the summer, but attendance in summer school isn't required for that program.
So it's unrelated?
Correct, unrelated.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify that. And then sort of picking, piggybacking on Lori's questions about when a kid gets stuck, just wondering what, what the approach is to helping parents kind of get on board and understand the technology, understand the expectations, understand the schedule, what, what, what do we do to make sure parents are clear on that?
Yeah, we're still working on a communication plan right now, actually, but we, we hear you, Ms. McCrina, did you want to add to that?
We will send, similar to, as earlier in the year, Anne Boleto and Jen Vessiden have a kind of a step-by-step process of how to access the adaptive programs, and that will be sent to the Tier Two students. It's already been sent out this year, so that, it shouldn't change, and our hope is that families are using it already this year, but that will go home with families in terms of how to log in, how to access everything, and maybe even, as Dr. Bates suggested, an I T person, if there was concerns with the technical piece.
Yeah, we'll be looking to, Mr. Brad, to help us do some of the communication around it. But I do appreciate you all raising the question about, like, what do you do if you get stuck? Because I wouldn't say we didn't contemplate that, but I don't know that we spent a lot of time talking about it, so.
I'm just, I'm thinking back to when my youngest, during the COVID years, and he was online, just when things were, the very early days before we were synchronous, and it was still asynchronous, just any sort of touch point, I could see it would be hugely beneficial, especially for, for any student, but especially the younger ones, to just, you know, daily, weekly, at some point being, I saw you did this, this looks great, do you have questions? And I don't know if there's a way to build in staffing support, I know that adds more to the staffing plate, but to just, to think about ways for them to touch base with the Tier Two kids, to maybe motivate them to keep going, and, or for the, for the parents to know who to contact. And then in terms of, at the high school, I know we're not changing the approach, but I just wanted to clarify that whether it's acceleration or credit recovery, everything is online, correct? But there's still an opportunity, regardless of which kind of course you're taking, to do it at the high school during certain hours, right? The library or wherever is open, and there's, there are teachers there to support the online learning?
Yes, yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, especially those who are watching, understood that they're not completely on their own all summer, there, there are supports built into the online program at the high school too.
Yeah, that's correct.
Which have been very helpful, for my family at least. And my last question is, I'm just curious, what kind of opportunities or options there are for measuring how successful this change is? Like, what kind of data can we collect and look at so we know if this worked, or, you know, how to tweak it for next year, you know, always looking for improvements? How will we know?
I'll start, just if you don't mind. I think the first thing I'd like to see is, is better participation and attendance. I think if we get the attendance of the students that are identified as Tier Three at a sixty percent rate, we'll actually have nearly the same attendance as we've had in the past. I think that's been one of our biggest challenges of being so diffuse at five different sites, and then not having sort of the commitment from our families to send their kids to schools. So there were numbers of days where, you know, we might have, say forty-five kids that were supposed to be in the Mount Daniel summer program, and forty-five kids signed up, so it's great, we got forty-five kids, but on any given day, we might have fifteen there, because they might come for two days out of the week instead of four or five. And I think that this approach, to me, really allows us to get more refined in sort of the, the way that we're approaching this, to the extent that we're actually, Dr. Bates mentioned commitment letters from parents, we're actually going to ask them to make a commitment to have their kids here four days a week. So I think for me, like, attendance and, and daily attendance is going to be, it's not just sheer numbers, but your attendance every day is going to be like number one. And then I'll, I'll let you all talk about, perhaps, thinking about, looking at pre, you know, spring, spring assessments and fall assessments, star assessments and reading and kindergarten.
No, I, I think you did that. Not to, you know, not that we, you know, we want to, you know, hammer home, you know, a lot of assessments, but we, we do want to take opportunities to look at, look at that through line. So as students are coming in, whether it's pre-assessments, or it's a fall assessment, and then looking at a winter opportunity for, say, star, and then a, a spring opportunity and looking at that growth. But, you know, the great thing here is that we know, our teachers are phenomenal, and they know our students, and so even if it's a student that they're receiving that they hadn't taught the prior year, they know that student's coming with data. There's a relationship between the sending teacher and the receiving teacher, or the sending school and the receiving school. And so having access to that data and being able to monitor it, kind of through that through line, those, those are some of the measures and metrics that we'll look at. Reading levels, math skills, and overall performance. I think the final metric would be looking at the gap narrowing that we've, we've been working on for, for a while now.
Yeah, it would be great to, to be able to track that, I think, I'm sure it would be very validating and motivating for the staff that's working so hard and for the families to see that data, whether it's in the fall at our data presentation, or next winter when we're looking at summer twenty-six, or whenever would be appropriate, but I think being able to look at that data would be, would be really helpful, and would also help us inform, you know, from, from a funding, did we fund this appropriately, to see the success that it sounds like we're setting ourselves up for. My last question was, was on, since we don't have specifically targeted services for elementary ESOL, because I'm presuming that the majority of kids who are still enrolled in the ESOL program are likely Tier Two or Tier Three, because they, if you exited perhaps your, your Tier One, I don't know if that's a safe assumption or not.
Not necessarily, so we have a large number of ESOL students who are really accessing their learning in an appropriate, like, manner and, and respectful of their language acquisition. So for me, it's always more important to, to ensure that we're using kind of the same data measurements for ESOL students to bring them into, into summer school, and then provide a teacher that's duly certified to provide the differentiation in that space for them. A lot of our students are really acquiring language at, at an appropriate rate, and for those students, I would, I would love more to see them with their, with their community and in their homes, like, even if that means that they're solely using their home language, it's more important for them to continue acquiring their home language at a similar rate, so that they're reading in their home language, communicating in their home language at an age-appropriate level with their peers in their home, because, in their community, because the only way our English gets better is if our home language gets better as well. They kind of grow together. If we stop using our home language, it's really gonna, it's gonna lessen the transferable skills that we have from knowing one language structure to another language structure. So I would prefer that, that kids that are, that are really progressing well in ESOL and not popping up as a Tier Three student, have the opportunity to navigate somewhere like any other student would in a summertime.
That's really helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Dr. Noonan, thank you very, thank you, Dr. Bates, to all your team, thank you everybody for hanging in there with us tonight with our questions, and we look forward to seeing how this goes, this is exciting. So, all right, we'll go ahead and let, as Dr. Noonan calls the fine folks go, and then we'll go ahead and move on to our, let's see, our budget, budget work session number three, F Y twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six, budget questions and answers.
Yeah, I'll just kick us off, there are two tonight that we wanted to cover, because I think the vast majority of the summer school ones, we did write up, but were answered in some of the conversations that we've had tonight. So we want to answer question thirty-eight, and then the other one that was submitted by Ms. Tyson, Ms. Sherwood, about Oak Street Elementary School.
Okay, and before we get to that, just if you don't mind, just kind of a reflection period of how, where we are, how we are with the budget, and then we'll dive into the questions. And I'm asking board members here if there's any reflections as we've gone through this process. I think the one that I have, I'll just kick this off, is the overall budget, to use Bethany's phrase, of zooming out. We are looking, we're still trying to identify how the city is doing with our revenue, obviously there's a lot of questions around where the federal government is coming with funding. With our, our conversations with our city council counterparts, we have signaled that we are trying, we are, we're going to meet guidance at five point nine percent, which is a significant down from our original of eight or nine percent when we started this in December. I'm very impressed with the staff and the school board and how we all have tried to get to that point. We understand that the school, the city is, and, and really a lot of us are in turbulent times with, with not understanding what's happening in front of us. The one thing we do know what's happening in front of us, because it's happening now, is we do have a significant amount of enrollment. We have students being enrolled every week, we want to make sure that our student-teacher ratio is low, that's why people come to Falls Church City, that's why they don't want to move, they, they want to move here, and they don't want the experience of other neighboring districts where that's not the case. And in my mind, to be able to do that, we really need that five point nine percent. Those are all front-facing, student-facing teachers, and there is one activities and athletics director position to make that whole, which is also in my mind a supportive of, of all the activities, and our students appreciate and attend. But I feel like this is, as we start to round this process out, I really hope that we can, we can adhere to the five point nine percent and, and hope we get that from the city, because this would be, we want to keep to our student-teacher ratio. That's one of my overall thoughts, but I welcome any other initial thoughts on specifics of the budget, or how we're approaching this, before we jump into the questions from anyone on the board. As I drag this out, just look down, everyone's got their eyes down, okay, there's Anne, yes.
No, I think you, I agree with you, and I think that was very well said, and I think it reflects well, at least many of the sentiments that I've heard in conversation with others. And I just want to sort of double down on this idea, not just that we keep the class sizes the same, but, you know, we have, we've had a lot of focus on enrollment growth, and it's important to meet those numbers, but I also just really want to express what I've heard others, including Dr. Noonan, say, which is, what we want to do is serve every student who's coming, whenever they come, wherever they're coming from, as well as we have been, and as well as our school district has always tried to do. And so I think we owe all students sort of the vibrant community and the, and the kind of, the small classrooms and the kind of education that we've been trying to offer. And so, you know, I, I see this, this budget as trying to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Jared?
Yeah, largely agree with that sentiment. I do want to clarify though, the, just for public's sake, the five point nine percent guidance coming in at that still means, does that still mean that we are going to fund some of the private placement out of one-time funds, or, and then also the parent resource?
I think, I think if we are able to get the five point, good question, if we're able to get the five point nine percent, we would be able to do the superintendent's proposed budget that had those in it. So I think, I think it would be funded out of the five point nine percent. And that's simply because the state has come in higher than we anticipated, and, and we have, we're starting to do some analysis right now on our healthcare costs. It does look like, you know, we put a placeholder of ten percent in for additional costs on healthcare. I think we're going to come in a little bit under that, but not by much, so there might, that might free up a few more dollars, but in the end, it does take care of the things that you've mentioned.
Great, yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, with, with the budget, I think we've done a pretty good job of making sure that the, like, like Anne was saying, that the services that the community has come to expect that we provide students, not just, you know, small classes, but, you know, making sure that they have access to student activities, whether that be sports, or Quiz Bowl, or, you know, you name it. And I think, you know, with the coming growth and the growth already experienced within the year, I think it's important for the community to kind of understand that, that is something that we will have to continue to- to ensure that we fund in the future. And especially with, you know, potentially hard times coming. You know, I don't think that, you know, we can always rely on, you know, people going out to restaurants in Falls Church to fund all of this. And so I think we, you know, I think we've been very thoughtful in what positions we're, we're funding and ensuring those positions are kind of making the student experience the priority.
Thank you, Jared. Any other questions or comments? Bethany?
Yep. Dr. Noonan, I want to echo something that you said, which is that at the 5.9% we'll be able to fund the proposed superintendent's proposed budget. And one of the things that I think is really important in that is that it honors the collective bargaining agreement with teachers and staff. That to me is one of, it's critical promise that we made as a district. I think it's really, really important that we honor. And so I appreciate the intentionality of you and your team of making sure that that is in there.
Thank you, Bethany. Any other comments or questions, reflections? Seeing none, I guess we'll turn it over to Ms. Michael for going through the questions that we have listed. Thank you, Ms. Michael.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the budget question responses. I'm tied very much into the conversation you were just having. In the response to question number 38, we look at the cost estimate for summer school, what we had anticipated we would save based on our preliminary thoughts, and then what we will actually save based on the plan that was presented to you this evening. So if you look in the proposed budget, we had estimated that we would save just under $118,000 in terms of the changes to our summer school program. And then when we calculated based on the final numbers that were presented to you tonight, looking at how many staff we had hired last year versus how many we'll be hiring this year, that actual savings is $100,000. There is that gap of $18,000 that will be factored into all of those adjustments that are made in terms of the additional revenue at the advertised budget stage. Any questions on that? So the next question that we have.
John?
No. Is number 49, John, is where we're going to jump to. And question number 49 was related to Oak Street and the leaks that we experienced there. I believe it was like two Saturdays ago. And the question had to talk, had to do with, is the roof replacement included in the upcoming CIP that we have funding budgeted for? And when we look at the roof at Oak Street Elementary, it's not anywhere really near its use, end of useful life. But we did experience during that last really heavy rain, leaks and leaks that we hadn't experienced before. And we had made previous repairs to that roof and we thought we had the problems resolved. But with that rain, clearly, we did not. So we had a roofing contractor who was actually out there either yesterday or today, the days are blending together for me. And they were able to identify two different locations where they believed that water came in. That places where that water is coming in very well could be related to the window work that was done on Oak Street, putting in the windows. So one of the things that we'll be doing is we'll be reaching out to that contractor. We have photos that the roofing company took for us showing exactly where those two things occurred. And then we've also told them that we immediately want to get them replaced or repaired. So we'll work on getting that repaired as we go back to the window contractor to try to get that assessed. So for example, in one of the places, there appears to be a small tear likely from when the windows were set down. If they weren't set down completely level and they had set it down on the corner, that would have caused a tear in the roof. And then the other location where they had put in stuff related to the secure vestibule, right, there is a penetration in the roof and likely the leak is there. So fixing that is of our highest priority. We absolutely don't want any water damage occurring within that school. And every time we've had any water damage, we have immediately remediated it. And then just to follow up, kind of related to this question, after we had the water damage on the first floor, we also did have that entire first floor tested for mold as well. And all of our mold testing results are available on our website under facilities under air quality. So thank you for the opportunity to present that response as well.
And those mold tests came back completely clear.
Yes, correct, correct. That's probably the key thing I should have stated. So thank you for adding that.
Additional questions on question number 49 about the Oak Street roof? Anne?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all of that detail and that you were so quick to, to get in on contractor to look at that. And so just so that I'm clear, I know that there's some mention of, for instance, ceiling tiles and, and some carpet that have, had been damaged. And I don't know if it was this most recent leak or prior, but all of that is, has been fixed or is in process of being fixed?
The one thing that is not fixed is on the lowest level, the first floor of Oak Street, near the custodial storage closet. When we had the flooding before, we have floor tiles that are unglued, right? And we will not re-glue those floor tiles until the summer. But there's nothing wrong with the floor there. They're just missing the floor tiles. All the carpet and then the ceiling tiles have all been repaired. Generally, when we have water leaks on the ceiling tile, it's related to something with the HVAC unit. But certainly, we want anyone, any teacher, any principal, if they have any water damage or anything that they notice, to immediately place a work order ticket within our work order system and then we'll immediately get them replaced.
Okay, thank you. And you answered. My next question was, which is a little beyond the scope of this, but it sounds like there is a good process in place for, for reporting and having those things followed up on. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Anne. Any other questions about question number 49? Any other reflections on the budget? Kathleen?
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of throw out some thoughts to my colleagues here, not expecting any final decisions tonight, but just something to think about. When I, I know that a lot of work is done looking at all the requests that come in and trying to decide funded versus unfunded. And I know a lot of thought has gone into that. So I don't want to minimize that. But when I look at, it's always interesting to read through the unfunded list. And one thing that stood out to me on the unfunded list, I know if we could wave a magic wand, we'd all fund everything, but none of us, I don't think, have that. So, but when I was looking at the unfunded list, one thing that stood out to me as something that I could see a lot of, you get a lot of bang for your buck out of potentially is funding the elementary assistant principals throughout the summer. And I could imagine that that continuity of leadership over the summer would be really valuable. So that's something that I would be personally interested in exploring and seeing if there's an opportunity to put that back in the budget. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there to my colleagues to think about. I know I've, I've spoken to several of you about it. Something that I would support if, if we can find a way to do it. And happy to have further conversations about it or hear more from, from the staff on the perspective on, you know, the hard work that was done and why it didn't make the unfunded list if there's something we're missing here. Just putting it out there.
Lori?
Were the assistant principals included in the compensation study?
Yes, the assistant principals were included in the compensation study.
And I don't expect you to know this information offhand. Where did they fall? Like, you know, if someone's making, let's say, $120,000 a year, it's either $10,000 a month or it's a little bit more per month, but less months. Like I-
So one of the things, when we did the compensation study, is we looked at contract length, right? Because it's really important that you're not comparing an 11-month salary to a 12-month salary.
Exactly.
When you look at contract lengths for elementary assistant principals, 11 months is very common, right? But we certainly understand the value of having them be a 12-month contract instead of 11 months.
Okay. And within that 11 months, if you're comparing apples to apples with other jurisdictions on 11 months, did they fall like in the middle?
When we did the compensation study, they were within the range that we were looking for, which was really 95 to 105% of that market average.
Okay. And while I think everybody should, deserves more money and everybody should be extended, I, I do worry that picking out specific parts of, of groups that were in the compensation study and looking to give that one group a raise, but not other groups that were also in the compensation study that also fell in the middle, we're kind of opening up a can of worms that maybe we don't want to do. Not that I don't believe they deserve it.
So when you look at an employee who's 11 months versus 12 months, you know, really their hourly wage is very, very similar. There's some slight difference because of the addition of annual leave, but it's really not a change in their pay rate. What the change is that they have to work an additional number of days and then they're compensated for those days. So it's very similar to when we've made other contract length changes, whether it was probably the most recent one that we did was the athletic trainer at the high school when that contract length was extended. What we really look at in that case is what is the work that we need this position to do? And when does that work need to be done? Right? And so, for example, in the athletic trainer, because of all of the athletic tryouts and everything that happens, it made absolute perfect sense to have that longer contract length of time, right? So similarly, when you look at the APs and the work that they need to accomplish, that additional time, right, would allow them to, to provide additional work and support over that summer period.
So I guess that goes to Dr. Noonan, you know, is there enough, do you feel the need that they should be working for that extra month or?
Well, I, you know, we would love to have all of our employees that are, you know, available for 12-month contracts to be on 12-month contracts. I think that's the, that's the perfect contract for a school administrator because they can work throughout the summer. We have some heavy times of registration they can certainly help with. So, you know, we, we didn't fund it just because we felt like there were other priorities that were higher, but it doesn't mean that it wasn't a priority. But just to sort of pick up on what Ms. Michael was saying, just to give you another example, we, we do have teachers, for example, who teach five sections of algebra. And if we need a sixth section of algebra, we will pay a teacher to do that extra section of algebra. So we do it with all, all of our, all of our, I'm trying to think of the right word, but wherever the employee is, whether it's a teacher or an administrator or whomever, the goal is to get the length right. Some of it may be short-term, some of it may be long-term, but the pay rate, the daily pay rate doesn't change. It would, it would remain the same. It's just the length of the contract would change.
Sure.
We have, we have some 11-month teachers right now who are teaching in our hybrid program. And if we had a 10-month teacher who wanted to take one of those positions because somebody left, they would have that opportunity as well.
But, but these are salaried. So if someone, so if an assistant principal is making $120,000 for the 11 months, they would then be making $130,000 or something for 12 months?
Correct. They'd be making whatever that 11 month is divided by 11.
Right.
And add, add to it, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Kathleen?
Sorry, I just meant to follow up. On, on top of that, it's relatedly, I'm just curious to learn more about the, the parent resource engagement specialist moving from 10 to 11 months to, and the support that they might be able to provide over the summer and, and what that would look like, or if that, if that's something else that, that would be worth exploring. Obviously, I know that population is growing and there's a lot of need over the summer. If we feel like the need is met in other ways, then that's certainly fine. But if you think that there's a lot of value to that extra month of that contract, I'd be curious.
So currently, when we need additional support from our parent liaisons over the summer, right, we pay them on an hourly basis to meet that need, right? So one of the things that we would want to consider in both of these cases is, is the work that's required all day, every day? In which case, like doing a contract length extension is the best option? Or if the work is sporadic or not, the full day, paying them on an hourly basis could be a better solution?
That makes sense. And I imagine that where people are in their lives, sometimes they're really ready for, for more summer work and sometimes they're really not. So I imagine it's employee to employee makes a difference too.
Thanks, Kathleen. Other questions or thoughts? Anne?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood in, when you were talking, Dr. Noonan, about how the state funding has come, have come in to fill the gap. And so some of the things that would have been considered one-time funding before are not necessarily. I just wanted to understand if that was true for sort of all of those things that had been identified as, previously identified as above the 5.9%. So including, for instance, the athletic materials, is that something that we would see then funded year over year? Or is that-
We could put that in as a year over year.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to, to make sure that I'm not over, overpromising what the state is going to provide, we haven't actually gotten the spreadsheets yet. The budget was passed by both the Senate and the House. They came to a reconciliation budget over the weekend. As soon as we get the spreadsheets, we'll know more. But then, then we can plug in our information and it'll tell us exactly what those numbers are. There was a delta between the Senate version and the House version. And my sense is that probably came in, our money will come in somewhere in the middle, which is just the right amount for us to be able to actually cover, cover that, that gap that we had between the 6.2 and the 5.9%. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments for the budget process? All right. Well, that concludes our budget question number three, or session number three. I think we have one more on the books that we'll go through if we have questions from the board. And that also concludes, Ms. Michael, your last budget question and answer session that you have done for Falls Church City. As many of us unfortunately know, this is going to be your last school board meeting. Fortunate, I know, for you. But, but we know that you're, we're all excited for your next chapter. We all wish you the best. And I think the, I remember one of the first times I met you, it was after an event and we were the cleanup crew. And I remember we were there and everyone was cleaning up and it was the last chair and the last table and you were there. And I remember someone asked her, you know, it's like, oh, who's that person? Because you kind of knew where to go. They said, oh, that's the chief operating officer for the entire district putting the last chair. And I think that everyone has those stories of you putting in and showing what this small city is about, is you chip in, we all help out, we all put on many hats. And for the COO to be putting the last chair away says a lot about your character. I think the other thing, though, beyond that, though, is what, I think leadership can be measured many ways. And one of the ways it can be measured is what happens when you're gone. And I think we can all point to many, many ways of the standard that you've set for our district, for what you've done for operations, how you treated your staff, this entire budget process and the transparency, which I know is something that you brought to our district from your previous chapter. I think we have all appreciated that and that's a standard that's going to live a long time. And we're all going to expect that from all of your successors. And that's done, that's great for the school board, but most important, that's great for our community because that's what this is about, is this is taxpayer dollars that you're showing, how are you using it? And you've set that standard and we really appreciate it. You're going to be missed. We all really enjoy working with you and it's going to be big shoes to fill, but we're looking forward to you in your next chapter. So I think others might have some comments as well. I'm sorry, Ms. Michael, I know this is not what you really want. So we had a video, but we were like, you know what? Let's just leave that for the school board only. So yes. Anybody else? Yes, Lori?
Ms. Michael, I just want to thank you for always being there for our questions, for issues, especially with, with the budget. You've been very helpful. You've explained things in very easy to understand terms. And that has been really helpful, not just to me, but also for the community who watches this. So thank you for all you do.
Hey, we're all jumping in here. Amy?
So when I, when I decided to run for school board, I did all this studying about how the schools operated and what all the positions were. And so if you would have asked me at that point what the COO does, I would have given you like a textbook answer based on your job description. But I think knowing now that you are a problem solver, you are an excellent communicator, you do more with less, and you are guided and make it all about the students and your passion for supporting the schools. And I'm amazed by that. And, and we are sad to lose you, but I am really excited about the path you're going to take.
I know most of what the public sees of what you do is the budget and so much of else of what you do is behind the scenes. And the budget is a great example of how you operate. I mean, I'm holding this huge binder, which I've read every page of, for real. The level of detail and thought and making this digestible, even at this volume of material, is nothing sort of extraordinary. Budgets are extremely complicated in any context. And the fact that you have created a system by which not only can the board understand the budget, but community members can understand it. And we can point community members to specific things. Now, here's your question, here's the information, here's you can track it through, is a true gift to the city. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just jump in. I think as, as the newest person here, I have not had quite as much time with you, but what has been impressed upon me so quickly is just how easy you make it for all of us. And you're, you make it seem seamless and that's no doubt due to your immense experience, your commitment to professionalism, your great communication. And I've just been very grateful to get to know you and to benefit from all of that. So thank you and, and best of luck on your next chapter. Excited for you.
I don't think I could add anything different from my colleagues, so I'll just keep on adding more of the same. You know, from running into you at the football games when you're there, because, you know, administrators and things got to be there, to answering our budget questions, to, you know, being very clear and concise and kind of having knowledge right off the top of your head. It's been fantastic to work with you and we are certainly going to miss you. So best of luck and feel free to come back anytime.
That's right. I will just wrap this up, I'll try and be brief, but I have just learned so much from working with you. I've learned about excellence and you're just, you're so good at what you do and we see it and the community sees it. And every time we have outsiders come in who've worked with you, they see it and share it with us. I mean, that is, is just really an honor to witness. I've learned your, about kindness from you. I've been able to watch you be such a strong and successful leader at the same time by, but also by maintaining kindness the whole way through, which is really inspiring. And you're also very generous with both your time, as we've all mentioned throughout the community, you're at every event, you're serving, you're, you're sharing your time and your joy with us. And you're also generous with your, with your patience as we like, as we can be, you know, asking question after question and not understanding and forgetting to reply to an email, and you're so generous with your energy through your patience. So I'm just very grateful for what you've given to this community and what I've personally learned about leadership from you. We just have some flowers to show our appreciation for you.
So I definitely don't like being the center of attention, but I am truly grateful for all of your kind words tonight and for the time that I've been able to be in Falls Church City Public Schools. This is a magical place, right? And it will continue to be a magical place. You know, my goal in life is that the things that we've built and the structures that we put in place, you know, will able to be continued. And this is such, such an excellent school system that I, I have full confidence that you guys are going to hire an amazing superintendent and you'll also fill with an amazing chief operating officer and other positions as well. So I certainly wish all of you the best. I know you'll still see me. I laugh, I love Whole Foods. And so hopefully I'll be contributing to the meal stacks revenue very frequently and attending events. And just thank you again, this has just been a tremendous opportunity and I've really valued my time here.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Wish you the best of luck, so. All right. With that, we're going to go to upcoming items. Dr. Noonan?
I think there's only one way to kick this off and that is, thank you for the opportunity for me tonight to talk about the upcoming agenda items. It's about as close to my inner Chris Michael as I can get.